Thank you for joining us. My name is Opal Malden Jones and I have the distinct pleasure of serving as city manager here in the city of Lancaster, Texas. This afternoon, we'll be going through our FY 2122 fiscal year proposed budget that is being considered by the city council with our first public hearing being Monday, September 13th at 7:00 PM and our second and final public hearing and budget consideration being on Monday, September 20th, 2021 at 7:00 PM here at Lancaster City Hall, 211 North Henry Street, Lancaster, Texas, 75146. We will walk through our budget presentation with the proposed budget and you'll have the opportunity to hear from our various departments about what and how they utilize the resources that the residents of our community allow us to utilize to provide services. Thank you for joining us during this time and we look forward to your engagement. We're going to look at our 2021 highlights for this current fiscal year, where we are, what we have been able to successfully complete that is attached to your goals and objectives. We're going to look at the whole budget development process, what the team, all of the directors, all of the members of the staff go through to make sure we are preparing and proposing a budget that covers the operations for this city. We're going to also talk about the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, because that has some dollars associated with it that will impact the city that we are going to come back to you at the work session on the 16th because that is going to be another lengthy discussion to walk you through how we're going to recommend using some of those dollars that are coming directly to our community. We're going to look at our compensation plan, then we're going to look at the actual projects and areas that we're recommending as a part of the budget, the budget calendar, which is required to be adopted and considered for consideration with Dallas County and our state statutes. And tonight, we will give you your budget binders, which is a lot of data, which is a lot of information. Ideally, I hope the presentation will kind of condense some of that down, but we'll then also be available to talk and walk through and answer any questions that you all may have either tonight or at a later time. And when we look at our 2021 highlights, one of the things we really want to talk about is industry. And industry is key to making sure that the organization in our community is sustainable long-term and that causes for job creation. And we try to create jobs in our community because we recognize, as you all have heard throughout the course of the year, particularly with the economic development session that we did, is creating more daytime jobs, drawing the population and keeping more of our people here causes the commercial opportunities to increase for the community. So in 2021, we've actually created 462 new jobs in our city. Dallas Morning News, rarely did we get to make the front of the metro section, much less the front page of the Dallas Morning News as a suburb of the city of Dallas. However, with the Walmart development deal that this city did, which was nearly a billion dollars in new construction and adding over 1,300 jobs to our economy, it was also record-breaking for the corporation because the corporation has never broke ground on two projects and one community at the same time. And so we were that community, Walmart's new model across the country that they're trying to do with this, they've only done it in one other city in the entire country. So, and they didn't do two buildings in that community, they only did one. So we really are moving forward and being innovative and creative and that was a big deal for us. In addition to that, in this year, the city has closed over almost $2.3 million in new development in the community for this current year. We also with that have done over 1.9 million square feet in new construction and some of those new jobs included IC Medical, Boise, Ali's Pet Mate, Mars. So those are just a few of the companies that are generating and creating and making our economy more sustainable and which will help us present this budget that we're presenting to you this evening. And so again, when we start talking about the budget and we look at how we're going to close out this current year. And so the fiscal year, it starts October 1st and ends on September 30th. So we're getting close to the end of this fiscal year. So we have to look at where are we? The staff loves getting the memo from me about this time of year that says no more spending unless it's absolutely necessary because it allows us to close out the fiscal year, have an estimate of where we will end up so that we have a beginning fund balance for the next fiscal year. We also look at sales tax trends, we look at new construction that may potentially be coming on the rolls. And so that's kind of what we look at. We also look at our state and federal mandates or any laws changing that are going to impact the presentation that we have to do for the coming year. City council, during your strategic planning session that you all do spend and give up two full days of your time looking at the vision and direction for this community and you and this process, you updated the vision, you shortened it, you made it more sustainable, more succinct. And we take that vision and in the proposal, if it doesn't meet or exceed or address fulfilling this vision or that mission, the question is why are we proposing that particular project? And so this budget is developed with those things in mind. When you look at the city at a glance, this is information that you already know, so not spending a lot of time on that, but you see our population, we're 31 square miles. We also look at our total miles of water, wastewater, our number of parks and the 24/7 services that we do provide. When you look at the population growth, as you all know, in just a few weeks, we will receive our census data and the consultant will be presenting and starting the redistricting process with the city. However, COG annually makes an estimation of our population and in January, they estimated that the city of Lancaster's population was 39,250 people and that was only, that was less than a 1% increase. And so we do recognize that we're not growing in terms of residential population as we were trended or projected to. The residential market is not moving for us particularly as fast as it is around us. And so our population is set right now at the 39,250. We'll look at our property tax trends. So here's the part that's always the interesting part when it comes to putting together the budget because we have to look at the revenues we receive and determine what our property tax rate will be and how we can provide those services. This is just a look back in 2020. Council will recall when I stood here last year before you at this time to present our property tax, we only had $3,997,773 because we had 453,000, 453,762,893 that were still under protest last year. And so those protests had to go through the system and so our budget had to be based on what we knew were our actual certified values at that time. And so after those, all those protests went through the system, our certified values ended up being for last fiscal year or this current fiscal year we're in, $3,411,50732. And just so you know what our tax rate is, our tax rate currently is .81973 cents, six cents for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation. How that breaks out is we put 60 cents, a little, almost 61 cents in our maintenance and operation. It's how we provide services. We have 21 cents that goes to paying our bonds and our debt. We put in a quarter cent to street maintenance and we adopted the street maintenance fee in 2019 as a way to always make sure we're able to take care of our infrastructure. When we adopted that tax rate, we went, we were below the voter approval, right, at our voter approval tax rate. What our voter approval tax rate ended up being after all those values were added back in, after protests were considered and resolved, the voter approval tax rate last year or what is called, known as the rollback rate would have been .822967. And you noticed that we adopted .819736 cents. Where are we today? On July 23rd, when we received our property values, you will note that the city has, Dallas County has certified $3,572,339,339,9, which is an 18.71% increase over the prior year. That's really good news. That's the highest that the city has ever received in a given year over the last 13. When you look at your total values and without the protests and dating back, even though we had some increases with your, in 2019 over the prior year.
So those don't include the protests?
No, sir.
Okay.
This number here. And so when we look at that, this next slide, actually I'll tell you what that does include for protests.
Right.
So with that, however, with our certified values, we are proposing a tax rate decrease. And you will see there, we're proposing a tax rate of .769287 cents for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation, dividing that out with .589061 cents of that going to our maintenance and operation, .180226 going to make sure we cover our debt and maintaining .025 cents for our street.
That's supposed to be.
When you look at that and looking at it over the prior year, just so you kind of see them both on the same slide, you can see that's about a five cent decrease in our overall tax rate. And again, still making sure that we can maintain operations as well as covering all of our debt payments and our street maintenance fund. This is just a look back at our historical tax rates and you will see that around 2010, our tax rate was .8675 cents for every hundred dollars of assessed valuation and we reduced it for the first time in 2020 and for the last couple of years, we have reduced that. Some of that is related directly to Senate Bill 2 as it relates to your rollback rate or what is now known as your voter approval rate. However, the other part of that is we've always talked about your values are a direct correlation to your property tax rate. And our values have been increasing, which is what our process has been, is if we can increase values, we could continue to bring our rate down.
Right.
And our values have steadily been increasing, which is allowing us to bring our property tax rate down concurrently with that. When you look at our survey cities, we're still at the bottom third of what those survey cities look like in terms of value. Oftentimes, we look very closely at comparing ourselves to the best Southwest cities and you will note again that with, even at our 3.5 billion, the city of Cedar Hill has 4.4 billion, the city of Dunkinville, we've passed them and we've kind of maintained our growth rate in passing Dunkinville, but Dunkinville is built out. They don't have room to expand or do new construction. So we are, I anticipate we will continue to surpass them. The city of DeSoto has 5.4 billion in overall values. And so when you start looking at that, bless you, we'll look at how our values, even though our values are increasing and our tax rate is coming down, our residents still are paying a lower tax bill based on and getting the same level of services or quality of services in our neighboring cities. We have, we always look at what our neighboring cities are doing in terms of their tax rate as well as we look at their values. And you will note from this slide here that the cities of Dunkinville, their current tax rate and they're dropping their tax rate by, you know, almost a little over one cent. The city of Cedar Hill is still talking about what their tax rate will be, whether or not they will maintain or go down slightly. We looked at our tax rate, we have what's called some recapture availability and Cedar Hill is determining whether or not they will recapture that. We didn't adopt what we could have adopted last year in our tax rate. Go back because I want to make sure I show that. We didn't adopt here what we could have, what we could have captured. Our tax rate is .819736. Our tax rate could have been .822967.
Right.
And so the difference between what we did, left on the table last year, we, it's called a recapture and you have the ability to capture that in the current year's tax rate to make sure you can cover those services. If you don't recapture in the current year, it goes off the table and then if you don't have any difference in future years, you don't get that opportunity for recapture.
So we didn't even re-capture any?
Not last year. It isn't, when we proposed this year's tax rate, it is included in our proposed tax rate.
It's already there.
Yes, sir.
Interesting.
So looking at that, the cities of DeSoto is, in fact, I, right before the meeting, was able to talk to their manager, they are going to slightly bring down their tax rate. It's less than a penny, so they're going to just drop it down to right at 70 cents. So the decimal places after the zero are going to drop off and they're, they're considering bringing that down to 70 cents flat. And so these are just a survey, looking at our survey cities. Sorry, went too fast there. When you look at our tax role comparisons, one of the things the council always wants to look at is where are we compared to, residential compared to commercial. Last year, with our 2020 tax rate, 52% of it was residential with 48% being commercial. This year, it went down 1% and up 1% on the, you know, and vice versa. So we're at 51% on residential and 49% on commercial. And when you look at the values, our largest increase for new construction as well as values was an increase on the commercial side when it looks at that. We had an 18% increase in our BPP and a 31% increase in our commercial values for 2021. When you look at our taxable valuable comparison, again, this is just another way to look at the pie chart that was on the previous chart, a bar chart showing you the variance and the difference with residential, commercial and business personal property tax. Why that's important is because that's a direct correlation to our average home value. You will note that the average market value in the city of Lancaster this year went up to $179,340. Recall that it cost us about $200,000 for each single family home to provide service to that residential structure. So our residential structures still do not cover the cost of service to provide that service to the homes. Our average taxable value, which is actually how we receive income on that home, is $156,976. And so you can see the difference in the market value versus the taxable value and how that impacts the amount of revenue we receive to provide services to residential, to our residential customers. The average resident in the city of Lancaster would pay $1,208.90 in a tax bill to the city based on the new recommended and proposed tax rate. And when you start looking at our values, average resident in DeSoto will pay about $1,500, Cedar Hill is going to pay about the same and you start looking at what our other cities, survey cities pay based on their value and the tax rate that they're proposing. And just as a comparison, last year, the average taxable, the average taxable value, the average resident paid $1,188.64 on their home. And we always try to make it relatable as best as we can. And so for many, many years, you know, we've been talking about the average cable bill and cable is, you know, people are streaming. And so we started looking at what's the cost of streaming plus, and there is no consistent value to measure because some people go with, you know, Hulu, some people go with Netflix, some people go with Apple TV, it's all over the spectrum.
You have multiple.
But what we did notice is that everybody drinks coffee. So I was asking, I'm not a coffee drinker. I drink a cold caffeinated beverage. However, I was like, so, you know, I have children that want a grande from a particular location. And then my staff said, not everybody goes there because we have a great coffee shop over here on the square, right? So we're going to support our small businesses. So we went to Big McDonald's and we looked at what is the cost of a medium mocha frappe? And my staff literally went and drove around and tried to check out coffee prices. And we learned that the average medium sized cup of mocha frappe is $3.89. Now mayor, that is not the senior citizen 99 cent cup of coffee that's this big. And that's just regular coffee.
Thank you for bringing that out.
Not many of our residents are drinking just the regular coffee because the staff went through the drive-through today just to make sure and test the hypothesis and McDonald's was out of the mocha frappe. So go buy you a 3.89 cent cup of mocha frappe, contribute back to the sales tax. However, for $3.30 a day, you can get 24-hour services in the city of Lancaster, literally based on our tax bill or what the citizen will pay to the city for the 24-hour police protection, fire protection, our E911, your street maintenance, the street light maintenance, code compliance, parks, trails, animal, all of those general government services for $3.30 a day, that's what we're getting to provide services. And I might add quality services to our residents. This chart literally just breaks it down on what it looks like on a yearly basis and then what it looks like on a monthly basis and down to the day. And we had to include the sales tax because you do pay sales tax on that, that mocha frappe. And even before tax, your property tax is still cheaper by the day. And we still want to encourage that because sales tax with our property tax rate, council will recall that a quarter cent from our sales tax goes to reduce a property tax bill. And so had we not as a city adopted that, our average resident tax bill would be higher than what it is because the sales tax is offsetting and reducing their property tax bill. So sales tax is also still supporting our residents through this process, which leads us right into sales tax and what we're doing, trying to continue to increase commercial usage and commercial businesses relocating and coming to the city of Lancaster. So we look at it over a year-over-year basis. You'll recall earlier this year, you all had to take action to rebate or refund money to a prominent sales taxpayer because of some litigation that took place. However, even in spite of that, COVID had its bad effects on us, but we also are starting to see a little bit more business, people staying within our city and utilizing the services that we do have. So we are estimating that we will end the year at about $10.4 million in sales tax coming in with a little over $5 million of that in the general fund to date. And so, I'm sorry, that $5 million of that going to the general fund overall and a little over $1 million going to 4A and then the remainder, $2.4 million going into 4B. And so we're estimating that we will continue to see a slight increase on sales tax. You'll recall as a part of the economic development, we deal, deal we deal with Walmart, one of the things you all approved as a part of that deal is if they sourced their goods in our community, that we would rebate a percentage of that back to them. And so we're hoping that that is, that trend will begin as soon as more real construction starts to take place. And we're anticipating that we will see that grow over the next year. So we are budgeting a little bit over what we budgeted last year, but in essence, it'll be flat compared to where we are year-to-date. I've already spoken a little bit about American Rescue Plan Act and you all are very familiar with that one. The President Biden and the US Congress did pass that act. And the city of Lancaster's allocation, and we did confirm this today, is $9,720,147.20. And we're going to make sure we get our 20 cents. The city of Lancaster is estimated any day now to receive approximately half of that, Under ARPA guidelines, the city of Lancaster can invest those dollars in response to COVID related to the workforce and the services that they deliver. We can use, utilize that to invest in our water, our sewer and our broadband infrastructure. And so you heard the consultant talk a little bit about earlier. And so the reason we're not recommending placing any of those capital projects in this year's operating budget upfront is because you already have capital projects in progress that are going to continue over, that you're going to have to pay for. And so we're looking at utilizing some of these ARPA dollars to do maybe our first year, we can't do a whole first year, but a small percentage of that coming from these ARPA dollars and then subsidizing the rest of it through the utility rates that we are going to be looking at over the next several years. And so now we'll start looking at the actual proposed budget and we'll look first at our proprietary funds and then we will go into our additional funds. And so we'll start with airport and go through golf, sanitation, water and wastewater. So with our proprietary funds, we're going to look at airport first. And you all are aware that the airport hangar, our terminal, new terminal building is complete and hopefully as COVID continues to ideally die down, we're in a, too much of an upswing right now, but we do want to have a grant opening. We do want to get you all out there so that you can visit our new terminal building. You all approved the cafe restaurateur at our last council meeting and we look forward to you once he gets open and get out there so that you can take a visit. Our revenues from the airport come derived from our ground leases, from our hangar leasers as well as our fuel cells. We have 150 A hangars and we typically stay anywhere between 98 and 100% occupied. Our fuel cells are a key driver for us. Our fuel cells are very competitive, our fuel prices are very competitive and we're able to make sure that when you're flying, you will choose to fly and land in Lancaster because you have the ability to get fuel that is very cost efficient. We have a car rental service that you can call ahead, reserve, have a rental car there waiting for you, land your plane, we have a great staff that'll taxi your plane, work with you to get it fueled. You can go take care of your business anywhere in the metroplex, come back, get you a, you know, burger and fries at the cafe and get back in your private jet. Our golf course fund, council will recall, we approved agreement with Touchstone Golf to manage the course. The golf course is a quality of life amenity. It does not cover cost of services. I don't want to even allude to that. However, under Touchstone's management and leadership, we are recovering more of our costs than we have ever historically covered in terms of the golf course operations. And so when we start looking at this, we have budgeted for the water meter replacement program. And so these are programs that are included in your operating budget, which is why we're recommending approving and what's considered with this budget is the rate adjustment that was presented by the consultant so that we can continue implementing programs that you have already started, which includes your meter replacement program. We are budgeting to replace a additional 485 meters in our three-quarter meters and you can see in our one-inch meters and our two-inch meters. And so we budgeted $246,000 to continue that meter replacement program. Why the meter replacement program is important is because that impacts the ratings, the readings that a resident receives. And you'll recall, we had a lot of concerns prior to us starting this program five years ago with residents saying, I know my meter's not reading correctly, something's not right. And though we learned that those batteries on those meters have a life at the time of five years, we replaced them with 10-year lifespans. And so we're replacing, we're getting through our system, replacing all of those meters in our residential as well as our commercial meters for all, throughout the entire city. This is not yet transitioning to the automated or the AMI, which is known as the AMI, which is the current technology because that is a substantial capital investment. And we recognize that we have line infrastructure and maintenance infrastructure that at this time outweighs the need for that type of investment at this particular point. We will look at what we got in terms of increases because we did receive increases on our rates from both Dallas Water Utilities and Trinity River Authority are increasing the city's rate for service delivery. And you heard him tell you that, you know, we believe that we would be sufficient on the water side, but we would have to increase the sewer side of the bill so high to cover it. Right now, the water fund is basically what's covering the cost of the sewer. And if you talk to residents, you all have already heard that residents ask the question, why is my sewer bill on the bill so high? And it's because the cost, the Trinity River charges us to treat that wastewater and that is increasing. What we have included in this budget are additional monies for the maintenance because we also recognize we have to stop or slow inflow and infiltration or what's known as INI because rainwater or any other surface waters that get into the system, we're paying to treat that. And so there is a lot of, we're doing a lot of maintenance online, there's a lot of education to do to make sure residents know, for example, the little piece out in your yard and oftentimes that little box is missing or it's not covered. Well, when rainwater goes into that, that's going into your sanitary sewer system and we're paying to treat that. And so we, we do things like we purchase some of those. And so when we see those out there, we try to make sure as, as much as we possibly can, if we can't educate or get it taken care of, we cover those. So that is what is included in terms of the water and the wastewater fund. And you saw those slides and so I won't belabor walking you through what you just saw. Literally, these are directly pulled from the presentation that we just went through. This is, this slide here is showing you the rate recommendation and the increase going from $20.90 on the water to $21.79 and then on the sanitary sewer going from 1504 to 1662, maintaining our winter averaging and utilizing the months of December, January and February. And the reason that's important is because the average resident typically uses less water during those winter months. And so your average, when you pay your sewer bill, you pay the difference of whichever is, you pay your either actual usage or you pay your winter average on the sanitary sewer bill. This is showing you the increases that we're anticipating from Dallas Water Utilities, the 13.2% increase in the cost to pay Dallas Water Utility for the upcoming fiscal year is the rate increase that we're receiving from them. And there is no, you know, we, they pay something, they give it to us and we end up having to pay that increase. The other program that is in the water wastewater program is the hydrant replacement program where we GIS locate and we make sure the valves are working properly, we replace and upgrade any necessary. The reason this is important is because this is what the fire department, if they go out, you definitely want the water department making sure that all of our hydrants are functioning and operating at the correct pressure and level because when the fire department hooks up, we want to make sure water comes out, even though they have some on their truck. Definitely want to make sure that that happens. And so this budget continues the hydrant replacement program and we have, year-to-date, we're planning to replace another 1,160 in this current fiscal year is what's proposed. The recreational development corporation receives a half cent of sales tax and what they do with those dollars or it covers the cost of operation for our recreation center, our senior life center, community park and the library. This is a quality of life amenity, it does not cover its cost of service. And so the general fund has been subsidizing the recreation fund. Our staff is constantly looking at ways to create programs that are affordable, yet they can generate a lot of activity and participation so that at least we can cover the cost of those particular programs. And the staff is continuing to evaluate that. We will continue this year. We will continue this year. At this point, we do not have the summer camp or the spring break camp or the Christmas camp programmed into this budget based on the COVID environment. There's a cost to do that and that program is intended to be fully cost recovering. And so we are literally watching what's happening in the COVID environment. And if things start to turn around, you may hear from us to adjust that budget a bit to cover the cost of those services. But right now it is totally dependent upon some general fund support and then what the staff is able to do in terms of recovering. Hotel motel again, seven percent of every stay. This takes care of the cost of service and maintenance for the visitor center as well as putting heads in beds. We can utilize those funds also if we have any type of major event that is going to bring people into our community where it would potentially require an overnight stay. We have the ability to utilize some of those dollars. So we're looking at, the staff is now in the process of looking at, how do we use some of those dollars to recruit some of those, you know, larger like soccer tournaments or things that could utilize our community park fields, other park access to potentially put heads in beds, but also drive traffic into the community, which will also help our sales tax dollars. It also helps us cover the cost of the museum, the state auxiliary museum for one of only three cities that actually have a state museum outside the city of Austin. Infrastructure been key priority for the last nine years. We have one time projects, but with the street maintenance fund that was implemented in twenty nineteen, it has really allowed us to do. We have done in the last ten years more in actual reconstruction, street projects than the city had previously done in the prior twenty years without a bond election. And so annually, the fact that we're able to do street maintenance because this council had the foresight and the wisdom to agree to making sure we're constantly setting aside those necessary dollars to improve our infrastructure has been key to what we're doing. And so when you look at our street maintenance fund, we recall that a quarter cent of sales tax, a quarter cent of our property tax, excuse me, goes into that fund. And this year, based on the proposed tax rate, that will generate eight hundred and ninety three thousand dollars to go into that fund. And I will show you here in just a second what roadway we're proposing to do with that fund, with those dollars. This is where the largest portion of your services are provided in the city and that is through our general fund. And we'll look at the services which include our public safety, development and some parks as well as our staffing. We're looking at our general fund. We will look at our major revenue sources for the general fund. Fifty three percent of our revenue in the general fund comes from property taxes. Twenty three percent of that comes from sales tax. The next largest revenue generator for the general fund are transfers and from those proprietary and enterprise funds that the general fund provides services to, followed by franchise fees from our franchise utilities. From Atmos Encore, from your cable spectrum. So those are where the largest, the franchise fees make up six percent, followed by license and permits and charges for service. When we look at expenditures, fifty eight cents of every dollar that comes into the general fund goes out for our public safety, which includes our police, fire, emergency management, emergency communications, your city marshal, fire marshal and unique court. Followed by the general government, which includes our streets department and I'm sorry, our building services, vehicle services, non departmental, animal, et cetera. And then followed by your public, your public works department, which is your streets department, which makes up about two point two percent. One of the things the council has made and continued to make a primary goal is a professional and committed workforce. And that is really important because the individuals that work for us are the ones that are actually providing the services to our residents. During the course of the year, development has been growing and going so strongly. And to keep up with that, one of the things we've been doing is the planning and zoning commissioners have been having, they have had to have more meetings because we have so many development deals coming in, we can't get those in all at one time. And so we lately have been having two meetings of the planning and zoning commission. We also don't have enough staff to keep up with the plan reviews, et cetera, that go into making sure those development projects get reviewed. And over the course of the year, things that we have looked at is adding, we need to add or have added a building, additional building inspector and someone to review our fire plans as well as the additional plans that are coming in, any project engineer. And this is to one, improve our customer service, two, to keep up with the speed of business. When developers come in and they have their project ready and it takes anywhere from seven, ten to fourteen days to review a set of plans, that slows down their development process because we literally have one building official in the building that can actually review plans. And by adding these additional plans examiners, that is going to allow us to turn the plans around so that we can get those before the planning zoning commission, get those before city council and get the construction going on those projects. Because again, it has a direct impact on our operations as well as our revenue.
So we're gonna have two of each?
No, we'll have one plans examiner and one fire plans examiner. The building official can review just general plans, but he cannot review your fire plans. Our fire marshal helps with that process. But some of the newer type plans that are coming in requires even a higher level. In some cases, we've had to go outside and hire third party inspectors, examiners. Because for Walmart, for example, I sent him traveling around to go review and find out about a fire system that nobody in the North Texas region had heard of before. And so he literally researched and went all around. While he was doing that, that took him away from doing inspections for fires. So he couldn't do what needs to be done on a day to day job. So we know that as development is growing, he needs the additional support, our inspectors need additional support. And it allows us to keep up with business and improve customer service, which we did hear you guys loud and clear during strategic planning is key and priority. But we also know that it impacts the bottom line. During the strategic planning session, we talked about some projects and priorities that we needed to get done for the year. Those are included in the operating budget to make sure we do. And this is just a recap of what some of those things are. We are working on the the future bond election to make sure we can establish our new Fire Station Four, identifying the location for that. We recognize that as development is going on the east side and you're gonna be keep seeing a lot more of that coming forward. To be responsive and have the appropriate response time, my fire chief tells me the one thing that causes him to lose sleep is making sure we can respond timely and accurately and not just based on, you know, some arbitrary type process. And so we know that we need to develop a fire station on that side of town. This includes the initial steps to get that process moving because we also recognize it takes about eighteen months from the time that you say go. And that is approving contracts to where it could potentially be under construction. And so we're really moving quickly to make sure we can address that because we wanna be kind of in alignment with as these construction projects are being built. We wanna kind of be right there, ready to respond when that takes place. Also looking at all of our overlays and the facility needs assessment as well as the comprehensive plan implementation. The proactive code enforcement strategy that the council talked about. And the city attorney talked to you about how we need to look at some of our code of ordinances as well as our property maintenance code. This looks at the rewrite for that as well. Out of the general fund in streets, we have half million dollars dedicated for street maintenance. Our street sign, you will recall the federal government implemented and mandated that all street signs had to become reflective. And so we're in the process that, we have a lot of street signs and you can't, we cannot afford to just go out and change every single sign. It's not just the roadway sign, it's your stop sign, it's the curve ahead sign, it's the children play, it is every street sign out there. It must be changed out to become reflective signs. We've been allocating a little over a hundred thousand dollars a year to do that program. It's gonna take us several, several years to get all of our signs completely changed out. But we are making headway in doing so. With traffic signs, you can see we have an additional two hundred and eighty seven thousand allocated. Alley maintenance out of the streets, out of the general fund, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in alley repair. School zone striping, as school starts back, we have to restripe those annually. And then we budget for the fifty fifty sidewalk replacement program. And council, you'll recall, you approved that program. If you are a resident, we will split the cost with you fifty fifty. If you're renting your home, we'll split the cost with you. You pay sixty, we pay forty. But the sidewalk in front of your property, you are responsible for the maintenance on that sidewalk. What those roadways look like and what we budgeted, you can see here, the staff has given us the number of different signs and what we're gonna do as a part of how we spend that budget. And just to show you where we are year to date, in this current budget, we allocated a hundred and five thousand dollars. And you can see we've already, we're just in August and we've done a little over seventy eight thousand in what signs we've been able to actually replace as a part of that project. And so that is gonna continue to go as well. The roadways that we're gonna do and the alleys that we're proposing for twenty one, twenty two. We're proposing to do the third phase of Bear Creek, which will take us from Blue Grove to Dallas Avenue. We're proposing to do Winter Green Road between Dallas Avenue and Telephone Road. Those are the two major reconstruction projects that we're proposing for this current fiscal year. And again, recall council, we did a pavement management program to rate our streets. Also included in this operating budget is it's time to update that. It's recommended that they come out and re-examine our streets every three years. Twenty one, twenty two will be the third year. So included in this budget, we have allocated costs for them to come out. They do what's called like a sonar radar and they have a truck that drives over the streets and it can tell you the condition of the subsurface. And then it rates all of our streets and we look at what needs to be done to maintain or repair those roadways. And based on the current list, priority list, these two roadways are next on our list to be reconstructed and included in this budget. You see, we have three alleys included in this budget. We have Westover and the one thousand block to repair or replace. We have Trinity and we have Ash. And then the striping projects that are included in this budget, these are roads, once we've kind of done some repair or re-surface or reconstruction, we have a second contractor that will come in and we do striping. And these are roadways that we're planning to restripe in the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, which includes Parkerville, South Houston, Cedar Dale, Bear Creek and West Winter Green.
Greetings. My name is Katura Barnett and I am the Assistant to the City Manager. The city of Lancaster strives to conduct business and deliver customer service to our residents with pride, which stands for productivity, resourcefulness, integrity, dedication and excellence. The city manager's office consists of executive leadership staff that oversee all city departments, which includes City Manager, Okwamawlin Jones, Deputy City Manager, Fabrice Cabona, and Assistant City Manager, Carrie Neal. Our office is responsible for implementing policy and advising the city council on all administrative matters such as the financial conditions of the city, public safety, economic development, infrastructure and capital improvement plans. All department operations, strategic planning, special events and city resources, including sanitation services within the city are handled and overseen by the city manager's office. For more information regarding future events and plans for the city of Lancaster or if you have any questions as a resident on how to get involved with the city, please visit our website at www.lancaster-tx.com or visit our social media platforms on Instagram, Facebook, Twitter, YouTube and Nextdoor. Or send us an email at communityrelations@lancaster-tx.com. We are happy and ready to assist and would love to hear from you.
Hello, I'm Cindy Smith and I'm the Deputy City Secretary for the city of Lancaster. I love listening to stories from yesteryears and learning history and paths and choices that people make. In our case, choices and paths that the city of Lancaster has made. As the Deputy City Secretary and under the direction of our City Secretary, Ms. Angie Arenas, I get to live out my passion every day in learning about the city and preserving history so that stories can be shared for many years to come. There are three parts of our office that I'd like to share today. Records management, elections and boards and commissions. I would like to share insight on some daily key functions of the city secretary's office. Our office is the custodian of all official records and documents as part of our records management duty. Our city council makes decisions to enact budgets, laws and policies through ordinances and resolutions. Those documents become official city documents that our office then has to codify and update our city code of ordinances. The city secretary holds and maintains the city seal and affixes it to all documents requiring that type of certification. Council meeting minutes are created and preserved by our office. Our office prepares honorary documents and proclamations. There are very exciting times throughout the year in the office of the city secretary. We get to preserve history and tell a story. Now, those times are during the times of council elections and boards and commission, boards and commissions appointments. Council terms are alternating three year terms. The city secretary office is responsible for preparing the candidate packages and receiving the filing packages back. Our boards and commissions are also volunteers. Those appointments are done annually in December and they're at a term that is established by ordinances, by an ordinance. The city secretary office is also responsible for recruiting, interviewing and doing the legislative requirements, which is the training and the oaths of office for all of the appointees. The city secretary's office is always preserving history, serving the governing body and constituents like you. A people who are a city without knowledge of their past, origin or culture is like a tree without roots. We aim to have many roots and deep roots. Thank you.
Hello, I'm John Martin. I am the record supervisor for the city of Lancaster. The records department is a subset of the city secretary's office and we process the public information requests for the city. The department staff, in East Manhattan, under a scales of nine, would say roughly two thirds of our requests are for public information. Would say roughly two thirds of our requests are for police and one third for public information. We assist the public on how to fill out the request forms, whether it's at the counter, by phone and or email. The team also provides guidance on who to contact for the public's questions and concerns. The department began writing and submitting letters to the Attorney General's Office requesting a ruling on whether specific types of information could be withheld based on the Public Information Act. As a commitment to our staff's professional development, we have weekly department meetings where we would develop and revise SOPs. We have training, we work on quick reference guides and we ensure that our department stays in compliance with statutory and regulatory changes. And most important, these are times of knowledge sharing. If knowledge is power, then the power of our department comes from sharing rather than withholding it or hoarding it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Krista Cloud and I'm the manager for the utility billing department. In the utility billing department, we process the utility bills for the water, sewer and trash services. We also set up new accounts and we're conveniently located at two eleven North Henry Street inside of City Hall. Making payments on your utility accounts is also very simple. You can pay in person at two eleven North Henry Street or you can pay at the payment kiosk located out front. At the kiosk, you can use your credit card, you can pay with cash or with checks or money orders. You can also pay online at www.lancaster-tx.com/utilitybilling. Or you can pay using the automated telephone system by dialing nine seven two two one eight one three two eight and pressing the number one.
My name is Elton Dixon. I'm the purchasing agent here at the city of Lancaster. I'm so happy to be here today to talk to you about the purchasing department. Purchasing department is where we procure or purchase items for the city. What we do here is we have bids so we can get contracts for numerous things around the city. Janitorial, mowing, office supplies, we have a plethora of contracts that we do bids for. We also help the departments find and make sure they follow the laws of the state of Texas when it comes to purchasing things. And so if you have any questions when it comes to the purchasing department, please email me at ADIXONA Dixon@Lancaster-TX.com or you can call me at nine seven two two one eight one three two nine. I look forward to your questions, I look forward to your contacts. You can also go on our website, lancaster-tx.com, click the Work tab, W O R K, and then click Bid Opportunities and you can see all of our bid opportunities and you can learn more about the purchasing department. I just want you to know that I look forward to hearing from you. Have a great day.
Hi, I'm Bryce Reed and I am the Communications and Public Relations Coordinator for the city of Lancaster. The Communications and Public Relations Department is responsible for the information that is distributed and shared throughout the city. This includes sharing updated and helpful information in weekly, monthly, and quarterly publications and newsletters and also through our social media sites at such as Facebook, Twitter, and the city website. You can sign up for our electronic newsletters by visiting our city website at www.lancaster-tx.com and clicking Notify Me towards the middle of the page. We also handle all media inquiries pertaining to events that involve the city. Our department also assists with coordinating citywide special and local events. If you have any questions, you can reach us by calling nine seven two two one eight thirteen hundred, visiting our city website, or you can email me at B R E E D at lancaster-tx.com. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jermaine South, the Equipment and Facilities Service Director here at the city of Lancaster. The Equipment and Facility Service Department is responsible for routine maintenance and repairs for all city buildings, facilities, and vehicles. We have professional service contracts with individual contractors to complete major repairs, maintenance of HVAC, janitorial services, electrical plumbing, security systems, and electrical uses. Our department can be reached at nine seven two two seven five one four six one. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Vicky Coleman. I am the Director of Development Services for the city of Lancaster. I have the pleasure of overseeing, following areas, planning and zoning, building permitting inspections, as well as engineering for the city. The Planning Division oversees zoning requests, exception requests, as well as a plan for the long-term growth and service delivery within the city. The Engineering Department handles administrative reviews for all planned developments that come in and those will include your water, your sewer reviews, as well as stormwater. The Building Permitting and Inspections Division is responsible for overseeing applications for new home permits, interior renovations for both residential and commercial structures, as well as plans for new buildings for commercial and industrial buildings. You can also submit applications for fence permits throughout our department. To reach us, you can dial nine seven two two one eight one two zero zero.
Hello, I'm Jason Boyd. I'm an environmental co-compliance officer for the city of Lancaster. Co-compliance is responsible for the inspection of public and private properties for the purpose of identifying environmental hazards, nuisance violations, unsafe building conditions, and violations of fire, health, or building regulations, statutes, or ordinances. When a violation is observed, the proper person is notified and given amount of time to correct the violation. To report a concern or issue, contact the co-compliance department at nine seven two two one eight twelve hundred. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Todd McGeehee, the Lead Animal Control Officer at Lancaster Animal Services. Hours of operation are Monday through Friday, ten AM to four PM. We do have a clear the shelter event currently going on from today all the way until September nineteenth. We also have a large adoption event on September eighteenth, as well as TCAP low-cost veterinarian services. So all that will be going on at the animal shelter located at six ninety East Main Street. In order to make a complaint with animal services, you can go to the city website, lancaster-tx.com and all you have to do is click on Report Concern or Complaint. From there, you'll be able to put in a call to have an officer respond promptly.
Hello, my name is Kellen Benbrook and I'm the Airport Manager for Lancaster Regional Airport. We provide fuel, aircraft towing, and hangar storage for all of our customers there at the airport. We have over a hundred and fifty hangars at the airfield and even more aircraft. One hundred of the hangars are leased by the city of Lancaster. We have a brand-new terminal building at nine five zero Ferris Road. We also includes a brand-new cafe that'll be opening September first. Everyone's welcome to visit. Please come out and enjoy the aviation atmosphere with us. If you have any questions or need any more information, I can be reached at nine seven two two one eight one two seven three or by email at kbenbrook@lancaster-tx.com.
Hi, my name is John Nelson. I am the Library Manager here at Veterans Memorial Library and we're open from ten o'clock to six o'clock, Monday through Friday. We have many resources. You're able to come in and reserve a computer. We have online databases such as our TechShare database. We have eBooks and audiobooks that you can access twenty-four hours from home with a library card. Speaking of library cards, we are part of the Best Southwest Consortium, which consists of Lancaster, Duncanville, Cedar Hill, and DeSoto Libraries. So we have a partnership card that will allow you to check out books from those four libraries.
My name is Lisa Wu Bay. I am the Director of Parks and Recreation. I oversee all of the parks and recreation services and facilities in Lancaster. This includes facility reservations at the Community House and Grand Hall and Pavilions, athletic fields at City Park and Community Park. We have eleven parks, a two-point-four hike and bike trail, Bear Creek Nature Park with its equestrian trail, and interpretive signage, aquatic programs, and an indoor pool, just to name a few. Majority of our community lives in an outdoor lifestyle, so we are working hard and being very proactive about keeping up with the steady growth and interest with our Lancaster residents. If you want to stay plugged in for our upcoming events, you can visit our city's Facebook page and city website under the Parks and Recreation tab. We will kick off the month of September on the twenty-fifth with our community open house. We are super excited about this event. It's a new one. Now don't forget, we have the Boot Bash and Turkey Bowl. We will kick off the month of September on the twenty-fifth with our community open house. We are super excited about this event. It's a new one. Now don't forget, we have Boot Bash and Turkey Bowl close behind for our annual holiday celebrations. In the meanwhile, we look to provide services for the community at large. We want to showcase the value of parks and rec. We're open for aquatics, water aerobics, aqua babies, and teen pool jam, walking trails both indoors and outdoors, athletic programs, men's basketball, flag soccer, and co-ed volleyball, teen, adult, and senior activities. That includes pool, croquet, and dominoes and more. Park staff is going strong with the Adopt a Spot program and maintaining our large, open, green spaces, close to six hundred acres. We take so much pride in the work that we do. I'm so proud of our team. We do not see the pandemic as a barrier. We are finding new and creative ways to recreate. There are many ways for you to get engaged and involved. Please stop by or call the Recreation Center today. Nine seven two two one eight thirty-seven hundred.
Hello, my name is Kimberly Walker. I'm the Court Administrator for Lancaster Municipal Court. The municipal court handles traffic citations, code enforcement, and animal control citations, as well as Class C misdemeanors. We also handle citations for Lancaster Independent School District officers. And we conduct court hearings twice a week, different types of hearings we deal with. And then we also have a monthly court hearing for defendants that would like to come in and speak to the judge regarding warrants. My staff and I are available Monday through Friday, eight to five, if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I am Marshall Rand, the City Marshal for the city of Lancaster. And I have the pleasure of serving the citizens of Lancaster for the last seven and a half years in its capacity. Okay, people ask all the time, what do the marshals actually do? Actually, what the marshals do, what we are, we are the law enforcement arm for the city of Lancaster Municipal Court. We actually have six core functions that we do on a daily basis. One, we arrest defendants with Lancaster City warrants. We transport defendants from all over the metroplex that have Lancaster City warrants. We serve summons, we serve subpoenas that are issued by the Lancaster Municipal Court. And we are certified court specialists to serve as bailiffs inside of the court. We also oversee the Lancaster Community Service Program. And lastly, we make a lot of traffic stops inside the city of Lancaster. So be careful if you see the marshals car and don't speed. And any questions or anything you ever need from us, please do not hesitate to call and ask for the Lancaster City Marshal Office. Thank you again.
Hi, my name is Michael Delmore. I'm the Interim Finance Director for the city of Lancaster. Our department is responsible for the accounting and financial controls of the city. We make sure that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with the Government Accounting Standards Board and we deal with the external auditors at the end of the year to produce those financial statements. We are also involved with the city's banking and investment activities. Overall, we are here to give our best to the city manager and her staff, as well as to the citizens of Lancaster. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Dory Lee and I have the pleasure of serving the citizens of Lancaster for eighteen years as a Human Resources Director. We are a strong team of four who care for employees, payroll, benefits, risk management, recruitment and interviewing, civil service administration, and many other areas of personnel management. The city of Lancaster Human Resources Department firmly believes that people come first. As a centralized department of professional administrators who diligently strive to address the needs of the organization in an inclusive way with concern for quality service that is useful, helpful, and honest. Human Resources supports the city in attracting and retaining qualified, capable, and diverse workforce to provide high-quality services to the residents of Lancaster. Please join us at the city of Lancaster and discover the excitement of working for the all-America city, the shining star of Texas. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Glaze. I'm your Technology Manager here for the city of Lancaster. Here in the IT department, our primary goal is to provide superior technical support to all city employees and manage all technical operations within the city. We provide technical support to approximately three hundred employees throughout the city. Many of our responsibilities, some of it includes securing the network and infrastructure from outside intrusions, cybersecurity. We maintain databases, user applications, as well as network applications. We're responsible for installing, upgrading computer service systems, as well as designing and supporting the network infrastructure. We administer and manage the email systems, backup data, in every, securing our data as well as backing it up. Essentially, everything from phones in your pockets and purses, all the way to tablets in the aisles. As we are responsible for phones on the desktop, that's IT department in a nutshell.
I'm Chris Shunman. I'm the Chief of Emergency Management and Emergency Communications for the city of Lancaster. Emergency man is responsible for coordination of the emergency management plan in an event or disaster situation. The Emergency Communications Department is responsible for answering nine-one-one calls and directing emergency services to the citizens. If you have an emergency, remember to call nine-one-one. If you have a non-emergency, you can reach us at nine seven two two one eight two seven one one.
Hello, my name is Kenneth Johnson. I'm the Fire Chief here in the city of Lancaster. I'm responsible for fire emergency responses as well as EMS. And then also in addition to that, I oversee our Fire Marshal's Office. We have three fire stations here in the city of Lancaster. Each station has an engine and ambulance. And our Station One, which is our main headquarters, has an engine, ambulance, as well as a brush truck. And come probably two weeks, we'll be adding a new ladder truck, which we're very excited about. We make about eight thousand calls a year and by seventy-five percent of those calls EMS-related. We're excited about being able to provide all those services to our citizens, as well as being very active in our community. Each of our apparatus is assigned to a school. We try to visit that school once a month and be a part of whatever the principal needs us to do that day. We're excited about that and also working with the school very closely. And hopefully, long-term, going to get a fire academy in the Lancaster High School. Again, very active in our community. We're very excited about the opportunity for you to come in and visit us. Feel free, stop by your local fire station to ask questions. We'd be more than happy to show you around. Have a great day.
Hi, I'm Chief Sam Robansky with the Lancaster Police Department. The Lancaster Police Department is comprised of many divisions, Patrol, CID, Community Relations, Canine, Traffic, and Property Room. This couldn't be possible without the support of our citizens and our council. As always, stay safe out there and we're always here when you need us.